Backstory, there's a Confederate monument here in town. This Confederate monument lives on the courthouse lawn. Uh, and it was vandalized recently, which brought some attention to it. And during these protests, the local group that has organized to mostly oversee the protests and things like that. Um, they have been going to the commissioner court meetings and city council meetings, I believe. Uh, just, you know, any meetings that citizens are allowed to go to and voice their opinion. Uh, and trying to get this fucking monument taken down because it is a monument that is in fact donated by the daughters of the Confederacy. Not, uh, like a big historical thing. It, it was donated in like nineteen fifty something and it says, "In honor of our Confederate patriots." You know, so it's like donated by a fucking literal hate group. Uh, and it says Confederate patriots. I feel like I should say that again for anybody who doesn't quite immediately recognize the irony of saying some stupid shit like a Confederate patriot. And apparently a couple of, uh, the members there were, oh, didn't they though? Yeah, a lot of things are named after, um, which actually there was also a, a video that I was recommended to watch by fucking PragerU of all people. So, uh, that should be good. We'll get to that, I guess. Uh, I've got like two or three things lined up we can check out. So that'll be on the list. What do you want for ya? You can't come in here. You're just fucking stuff up. Anyway, let's do it. I hate myself.
So I'm gonna speak to you today. But I'm here to object, to voice my strong objection for removal of the Confederate monument on the courthouse grounds.
My man said, "Strong objection." We're, it's already great.
This court has been subjected to just an endless barrage of usings and verbal banter and imploring people to remove the monument. These liberal cancel culture groups.
Oh my God, I'm gonna fucking die dude. I'm gonna fucking die. Homie's not a minute into his spiel. He's not a minute in and he has already equated cancel culture with fucking the Confederate monument. It was a Confederate, a monument to Confederate soldiers. I can't even fucking say it dude. This has cooked my brain. Yeah, that's how it is here. The statue being donated ten years ago, like this was fifty years ago. People are like, "We don't wanna write history." It's like, motherfucker, what history does that represent to you? Do you even know what it says? Did you even fucking know it was there before somebody wanted to remove it? The answer to that is no, I can tell you. And like it's, it was donated by the daughters of the Confederacy, dog. Fucking, like, they're so backed into a corner with this shit lately. I feel like the, the excuses are, are so fucking ridiculous. Ah, god damn it. Hold on. Let's get back to this fucking idiot. Cancel culture. It's not cancel culture. I'm not losing my fucking mind here, am I? Ca- you can't, it's not cancel culture by saying, hey, the Confederate, uh, Confederacy was pretty fucking bad. Maybe we shouldn't like glorify it and act like it's just a normal part of our culture, you know? That's not cancel culture. The Confederacy fucking sucked dude. Like they were literally traitors. Oh my God.
Groups and individuals that ceaselessly hounded this court in hopes of weakening your resolve and with the objective of creating enough secondary bias and discourse to eventually get you to acquiesce to their demands.
Okay dude, so the, here's something about this whole liberal, liberal mob mentality. It, it, it go, it's, it very, it meshes very nicely and can even help explain some of the crazy shit that people are saying about the election, right? Cause one of the main arguments with this election is that people are saying that it's like in their head, which is very dense with brain matter, obviously. It's impossible that Joe Biden won because nobody would have voted for him because they didn't, you see? Because we're adults and that's how we think about things. Um, and that's what they claim every single fucking time people try to get something done politically. But it's funny though, because this asshole is literally standing in a commissioner's court arguing, maskless by the way, that, uh, it's, it's that it's cancel culture and that it's a, a, a liberal mob trying to, trying to, uh, uh, connive their way around, um, and like mentally abuse the fucking commissioner's court into bending the knee to the, the almighty fucking social justice or whatever. And like, it, it, it's politics. It's just politics dude. It's just politics. This is, you fucking cry about it when they kneel on a field. You fucking cry about it when they protest in the streets. They do it the right way. They are doing it the right way and you're fucking crying about it. It has nothing to do with your, uh, wi- with any sort of crazy liberal conspiracy and, and I just don't like the way they go about it. Uh, we should really, you know, fuck you. That's not the problem. Very clearly, that's not the problem because any avenue that anybody takes that disagrees with your racist ass, uh, predilections. They try to shoot it down as if it's this crazy like, like there's a mob frothing at the mouth and like just with pitchforks and fucking, it's like dude, it's an organized group of young people that are filing paperwork and submitting like official fucking letters to the city and shit. They're doing things as the right way as you possibly fucking can. You, you can't do it more the right way than them. And this fucking knucklehead is still gonna stand there with his stupid fucking face and say out loud that it's like a, a liberal mob mentality harassing the fucking dude. Like what dimension did this idiot accidentally teleport from where this shit makes sense to anyone with more than like four fucking brain cells? This shit drives me so crazy. Lindsey Graham, politically fashionable was, was the, one of the moments for that shit. It's like, what the fuck are you talking about? Politically fashionable? You mean more people want it Lindsey? Is that what you mean by politically fashionable? I don't know if they know this or not, but their job is to do things that are politically fashionable. That's kind of the whole fucking rub. I do believe that's why we pay them, you know?
We've been seeing this type of mob mentality and pressure tactic all over the country in the past eight months.
Pret- what, what would you use besides a pressure tactic, you fucking dunce dude? A pressure tactic? You're literally just saying you're mad that they want something. You, you fucking lawn chair. What the fuck dude?
They don't like a symbol or a statue or a monument or any other representation? All they need to do is either go tear it down or hound the local authorities until they relent their demands.
My man!
And I wanna thank this court for not succumbing.
My man. Does this fucking clown understand how far apart those two things are? He's, he's literally admitting that he doesn't ever want anybody to be able to say anything to the fucking court. What the fuck do you mean pressure tactics? Or like, like, oh my God dude. I fucking, this is insane dude. I'm tired of the liberal left using pressure tactics. That's how they cheated the election. They used pressure tactics to, to, to force other people to believe the same things that they did because you know, I don't believe it. Nobody else could believe it unless it was the demon rats forcing it into their brains. I mean, what the fuck dude? Like what do you think this is? How, how, how small is your fucking bubble of reality where you think that's how shit works? Like Jesus fucking Christ dude. I, I'm bewildered at this fucking guy.
This form of liberal, politically correct, cancel culture terrorism.
Don't, what, those are not- This dude is shooting fucking Breitbart salad, dog. Liberal cancel, hold on, I gotta run that back.
Culture terrorism. This form of liberal, politically correct, cancel culture terrorism.
Liberal politically correct, cancel culture terrorism. Fucking what? My dude? Oh my God. Holy fuck man. Yeah, I also don't know how I feel about it. It, for me, it's too many adjectives, too many words, you see? I prefer my terrorists with just one or two labels. Um, I feel like it might get, uh, confusing if my terrorists, if my chosen terrorists, uh, were to, um, were to sort of encompass a larger and larger group of people every day. I wouldn't wanna deal with that either. So I can see ha- uh, kinda how reality is, is fracturing these people's fucking minds. Uh, because that's what they're watching happen as they rescind further ever into their, um, fucking nautilus shell of insanity. They notice the picture of everyone else in the world gets smaller and smaller. And they can't really make out, uh, the fact that there are in fact diverse opinions and that maybe theirs might not be the best. And so after that, it's, uh, uh, all that's left is to try to handle the idea that the reality you've constructed is, um, every single person on the planet besides you and every other one of your racist buddies is just being bang washed by the liberal media or whatever. Uh, you know, so I guess, you know, I can see where he's coming from in that regard. Oh, that's pretty crazy. How's it going?
Extremist group of individuals wants to destroy a cancel culture terrorism just because a vocal extremist group of individuals wants to destroy a monument honoring the men who fought for Walker County.
They fought for Walker County, my man said. He said they fought for, he said they fought for Walker County. Hold on, I gotta, I'm gonna get a lot of mileage out of this graphic. Yeah, it certainly doesn't seem like there was any fucking civil war battles fought here in Huntsville, my guy. Dude, this fucking guy, man. Uh, this place is such a, such a shithole. Wait, where did my fucking video go? Uh-oh. What? Uh, we are watching a, um, let's see. Uh, a video from a local. Goddamn dude, I swear to God, Facebook is driving me fucking nuts. There we go. Okay, apparently I can't leave the page on a Facebook video, otherwise it kicks me smooth off. So that's pretty cool. But yeah, it's a video from a local meeting about, um, there's a Confederate monument in my town on the courthouse lawn that people have been trying to get, uh, removed. And it's not even like a historical one. It's just like fifty or sixty years old. And, uh, these old racist dudes are like losing their shit about it.
Fought against the tyrannical invading northern air to remember pay tribute to the court for not succumbing to this form of liberal, politically correct, cancel culture terrorism just because a vocal extremist group of individuals wants to destroy a monument honoring the men who fought for Walker County.
The, I cannot believe, I ca- I'm gonna, I cannot believe he said the men who fought for Walker County in the Civil War. This fucking guy.
The monument is there to remember and pay tribute to the men like my ancestor through their service.
Imagine being proud of it. Imagine being that proud that your ancestor was a Confederate soldier. Holy shit dude. This guy is just right out in the open, mask off, fucking, I ain't even gonna try to hide it. Holy shit.
Fought against the tyrannical invading northern army.
The tyrannical invading northern army? Dude, is this guy real?
An army that came down and pillaged the homes and the lives of millions of people in the South.
What?
Men that this monument represents defended their homeland and their new adopted nation in the same manner that a former colonel in his majesty's British militia fought for his new adopted.
No, 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 you see, no, 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 no. The Confederates were not like the fucking colonists. I mean, I'm not saying that, uh, they were better, either one of them. But it was super duper not the same thing. Uh, well, actually, no. No, it wasn't yet. Okay, I'm trying to get my history lined up. Yeah, exactly. He means the United States Army, indeed. The invading force from the north who came down and needlessly pillaged a bunch of innocent people's fucking houses in the Confederacy. I mean, probably dude, probably the US has and always, uh, is and has always fucking sucked in that regard. You know what I mean? Uh, I wonder how he thinks people feel in, uh, other countries where the US is doing an imperialism. And, uh, they are literally just defending their homeland from people who they otherwise have no fucking quarrel with. But you see, like, most of those people aren't being assaulted, uh, aren't under assault by armed forces because of, um, fucking slavery and seceding from their, uh, country. Like illegally, like that's most of the places that the, the US is doing that now is not, that's not the case. That was the case here back home. Uh, you know, there's a difference, but it's funny how he doesn't think the argument's applicable. I would bet. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not a, a large gambler.
His name is George Washington. The monument represents men who were fighting for freedom from an oppressive federal government.
Bro, the nor- oh, bro, 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 bro. But the freedom to own slaves. Holy fuck.
And the right to self-govern as did our founding fathers. They were not espousing white supremacy or slavery or the perpetuation of that.
Uh, uh, uh. Yes, they absolutely fucking literally were doing that. Are you fucking crazy dude? Are you fucking crazy? Uh, I don't know why I'm asking. This man is clearly out of his fucking mind. Uh, not even just for holding those beliefs. A lot of white people think that. Not so many of them would be as bold as to go vocalize it so loudly and clearly and angrily and condescendingly in, i- uh, in front of other people, you see? I don't think he's running for anything.
To suggest otherwise is just sheer untrue hype.
Hype? No, no, no. Look, I know it's hard to keep up with the lingo these days, uh, fucking boomer, but hype, this is not hype. Nothing is hype about, uh, the Civil War on either, from either perspective. There's no hype involved. I just need to clear that much up right now. It was all garbage, uh, and terrible. Um, but if you had to say like one side was worse than the other and you had to look at why they were fighting that war. Uh, you know, you wouldn't, but a normal person would recognize who that was. And they certainly wouldn't call the people fighting to abolish slavery tyrannical. I don't think humans mostly would, would, would agree. Uh, I don't know where the fuck this dude is from, but I, I hope he's not real. I'm gonna pretend this is a nightmare.
No one in my family history has ever owned a slave.
I, I don't, nobody fucking cares either. Nobody in my family history has ever given a shit whether anybody in your family history has owned a slave. How about that? You fucking idiot. Oh my God, I hate hearing that sentence.
Nor have we ever endorsed the perpetuation of slavery.
You are literally arguing at a commissioner's court to keep a Confederate monument donated by a fucking hate group, the, the daughters of the Confederacy that has been asked by a group representing social issues concerning the black community and representation of the black and LGBT community in this town. You are literally calling them terrorists, you stupid, 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 festering piece of shit. In the same breath that you called them terrorists, you see, you said you aren't perpetuating white supremacy. You stupid fucking idiot. Like how smooth does one, one's brain have to be before you can say those two things so close together and not be like, wait a second? Am I a complete fucking asshole? I might be. I feel like I sounded like a complete insufferable piece of shit just then. No, not this guy. Not our guy here. He was born without the ability, uh, to understand anything at all. He's not an official. He's not an official. This is just some fucking asshole.
Assumption by those who suggest that Confederate monuments or an endorsement of white supremacy is nothing, is not only hyperbole, but unadulterated tripe. Ninety-eight percent of the Confederate soldiers did not own slaves.
Because they were fucking poor, you fucking idiot. Rich people owned slaves and they were fighting for the rich people. What the fuck is wrong with, with, what is wrong with people in the South, dog? What is wrong with people in the South? Ninety-eight percent of people didn't own slaves. Imagine thinking that was a good fucking argument for what he's trying to say right now. Duh dude, because the people who owned slaves were fucking wealthy and that's why they were sending your ancestors who fought in the Civil War to their fucking death and convinced them that the North was tyrannical because they were trying to liberate their fucking farm tools and they wouldn't be rich anymore. You stupid fucking piece of shit. This is my local city council or, or commissioner's court meeting where there is an incredible racist just going off. Yeah, there's just a Confederate monument on the courthouse lawn. So far from the commissioners who voted to keep it, uh, we've heard that it's not their monument. We didn't put it there. We just gave them a place to put it. Some dumb shit like that. Uh, and then following shortly, uh, uh, I got a bunch of emails from people that said they won't keep it. I haven't had anybody that in a black neighborhood say that we should get rid of it. That was the excuses that they gave before they made the vote. And so now we're listening to fucking Captain America here be a complete goober. And try to justify the fact that ninety-eight percent of Confederate soldiers didn't own slaves as like, see, the South wasn't racist. The Confederacy's not racist. Like he just called the local BLM group terrorists. Also for the record, so, you know, like, he only knows they exist because they go to these fucking meetings and they follow all the rules and they file for permits whenever they have like protests and shit and they're on the level because they're a bunch of fucking very intelligent, capable individuals. And this fucking moron, oh my God. This dude is a fucking like, this is like straight Klansman shit.
For anyone since you two suggest that millions of young men enlisted in the Confederate armed forces solely to defend slavery is simply profound and blatant ignorance of history and a profound denial of ethics.
What do you think people are gonna see, uh, current military operations as fucking fifty, a hundred, two hundred years in the future? Do you think they're gonna look back and go, all of those young men, uh, undoubtedly signed up to go and steal resources and do imperialism on other countries? Do you think that they would have fucking told the people enlisting in the army exactly what was going on? All of the, as you admitted, the rich people who fucking didn't go to war and didn't enlist? You fucking moron. Like how does this not click in their head dude? How does it not click? He literally just said it out loud. The soldiers weren't the ones who owned the slaves. Fucking yeah dude. Yeah, yeah, exactly. My, my dog. Are you out of your fucking mind dude? Like, that's part of it. What the fuck dude?
While slavery was rightfully ended as a result of the war, the causes for the war were many. And even most rudimentary historian will acknowledge that tariffs and terr- territorial acrimony, federal transgressions and economic factors were the root cause of secession. Lincoln stated on more than one occasion that he was not gonna invade the South to end slavery. Federal government invaded the South.
Everybody fucking hated Lincoln anyway. What does it matter dude?
For one reason and one reason only, to, to prevent secession and because a US arsenal at Fort Sumter was fired upon. That's the reason.
Uh, they only invaded the South because the South literally fired on them. That's it. The whole Civil War was just a fucking, was just a, uh, the whole Civil War was just a fucking misunderstanding by this absolute fucking caricature of a jackass's, uh, uh, statement. The only reason is because they fired on Fort Sumter. Yeah, you fucking moron. That's an act of war. Did you know that? Did you know that if you shoot a gun at somebody, they can probably shoot you back? And if they win, generally speaking, um, and they didn't shoot first especially? And like, maybe they were breaking into your fucking house maybe? Uh, generally your camp thinks that's a good thing and some of you even can't wait until you get to try it out yourself, you see? Um, how the fuck are you going to stand there and explain that the only reason the Civil War happened was because they fired on an armory at, at Fort Sumter? The tyrannical North, how dare they, how dare they take a group of people, well, a group of governments, local governments that were previously a part of the one government that said, um, we're just gonna, we're our own thing now against the rules that everybody was already agreeing to, uh, because you don't want us to have slaves. And then they attacked an armory and like, that, he's like brushing that off. Well, this is my hometown too, so that's bonus points for my passion meter. I need like a, a, an anger, like a rage meter. Or something, like a little, a little power up thing.
The other truly despicable and unconscionable misrepresentation of the anti-monument movement is that monuments and other-
It's not an anti-monument movement. It's an anti-Confederate movement and it's, um, the whole rest of the country, you see? It's, it's not an anti-mon- it's not monuments that's on the, uh, fucking list for things that the left doesn't like. It's like monuments to Confederates probably is like number one.
Other symbols honoring Confederate soldiers who fought for the South as an example of white supremacy. This is nothing more than Al Horrible Calver tripe.
You, you, okay, but this dude doesn't even have an argument, dog. He's just saying dumb shit. Like he's just saying things that he thinks sounds really smart and impactful. It's just bad, it's lies. But why bud? Why is it a lie? Why is it unequivocal tripe? It, because it is, uh, it is a misrepresentation. What do you mean? What did they fight for then? Well, all they did was attack an armory in Fort Sumter. Had nothing to do with slavery. What the fuck dude? Why did they attack the armory, dog? What are you saying?
We rid public places of monuments of all and all other symbols that honor those who owned slaves perpetuated the institution of slavery or those that have made blasphemous and white supremacist comments and all such statues of Washington, Jefferson, Grant and Lincoln need to be removed from public view.
Based. At least he understands part of it, right? He's definitely not being sarcastic. Uh, yeah, dog. Fuck, uh, fuck him, you know? Put him in a museum. It's funny though, because for somebody who wants to feel so oppressed, he doesn't mind seeing the American flag. You know, you'd think if it was that big of a deal to his little fucking racist ass soul, that seeing the American flag would really bother him and he made petition to get that removed, then he may understand exactly where people are coming from. You know? Because, uh, I, I, it, it blows my mind that I, I don't know dude. I don't know where, what, what to say about this fucking, this line of thinking here. It's fucking me up just trying to follow it. He's like, oh, well, I guess if, and, and I wanna run it back because I'm pretty sure he said something that was like actually poignant.
As an example of white supremacy. This is nothing more than Al Horrible Calver tripe.
Not that.
We rid the public places of monuments of all and all other symbols that honor those who owned slaves perpetuated the institution of slavery or those that have made blasphemous and white supremacist comments and all such statues.
Yeah, he's like, well, we can't take down statues of people who were racist and, and slavers. Otherwise we'll have to take down statues of all the people that founded this country. And then, five seconds later, scene change. America is not a racist country. Scene, uh, your average conservative. A fucking idiot who has absolutely no grasp on anything that they're talking about. Even when they are the ones coming up with the made up fucking points that they use so relentlessly to basically force you to understand how fucking goddamn stupid they are. At every turn of every, at every turn of every path of twisting logic that they try to use. Like, what the fuck dude? He's like, we'd have to get rid of all of the, the founding, all of the important historical figures in America, at least were racist. They denigrated black people, uh, they owned slaves. You are, you're just gonna get rid of all their shit? Maybe, I don't know. Why don't we ask the people who are affected rather than the people who are getting all fucking foot stompy and having a hissy fit about it? Because your feelings are hurt. What if, what if that? What if instead of shouting down people who it actually would affect and acting like they're terrorists, as you say? And that they are just crybabying to get their way? What if you just kind of shut the fuck up for a minute and understood that they are exactly as valid of a person as you are? Um, one of you stands to actually, uh- And one of you stands to actually, uh, suffer some sort of anguish or, uh, I don't know. Feeling of exclusion in society when you see these things and the other one? You don't, you don't feel those things by not seeing, uh, a Confederate, and if your identity is that, uh, you don't feel welcome in a society that doesn't allow Confederates, you are welcome to fucking leave because we evicted the Confederates from the United States at gunpoint. Rather soundly, uh, a couple hundred fucking years ago, you know what I'm saying? Um, shouldn't be that hard to figure out, I don't think.
Jefferson, Grant and Lincoln need to be removed from public view. But instead, we honor these men with national statues, monuments, likenesses on coins, bills and stamps. And I own here the group that was, that was using at you today, calling for the removal of those.
In what reality are those equivalent, my guy? Uh, eh, eh, are you fucking kidding? Yeah, because that would be normal and a reasonable thing to do, is for a group of activists to yell at the fucking Walker County Texas Commissioner's Court about money. Uh, having President's face on it. Sure, man, sure, your logic is, that's doing all the heavy lifting, this guy with the fucking arguments here.
To get rid of them. I find it incredibly uneducated and intellectually dishonest to hold slaveholders and historical figures that I just mentioned as honorable, noble and virtuous individuals. But not others like my grandfather and my great-great-grandfather and ancestors who never owned a slave.
Dude. Uh, do you understand that they don't fucking care about you either, dude? Do you understand you just said out loud? You just said it out loud, the whole problem here. The whole problem with this whole motherfucking country, dude. And the history they're in and the things that people are aware of now, you literally just drew a fucking picture of it for yourself and yet you still are guessing, is it a shoe? It looks like a croissant. Fucking come on, man. Yeah. Your ancestors didn't have a fucking name, man, because they weren't rich, right? They don't have statues to them, that's the difference, the people that you worship that had statues were people that had wealth and power. And they have statues erected even though they were pieces of shit because they had wealth and power, most of them, most of the statues around today. Like, how is that so hard to figure out when he literally spells it out in, in, out of his own fucking face hole? Out loud, he can't figure it out. I mean, holy fucking shit, dude. Eh, eh, ugh. It'll, it's probably only gets better, thank God, there's only like a minute and a half left.
But simply fought for their state and their new nation. Additionally, if this court is going to remove Confederate monument based on the premise that it represents the perpetuation of and endorsement of slavery, then hundreds of other people will have every right to be right back up here in the coming weeks. Demanding that all symbols of anyone that ever owned a slave in Walker County be erased from view.
Don't threaten me with a good time. Are you fucking kidding? I, 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 oh, eh, not only why is that this fellow's ultimatum, but why the fuck does he think that it has the impact? You can tell he thinks that's striking a real chord that nobody's ever considered before, um. Yeah, I mean, that's kind of the whole, the whole, the whole deal, dude. Whole deal, maybe we put him in a museum. Uh, and yeah, they actually would, they have the right to do that now as a matter of fact. That's kind of the whole point of, uh, living in a goddamn society, you fucking goblin. We are allowed to voice our concerns to the government, local, state, federal, all levels. Uh, it may be easier to get some attention, uh, of some levels than others, but yeah, every, literally everybody has the right to do that and you are now complaining that people have been using that right and now you have to fucking think about it when you hear them talk. You gotta, you gotta, you gotta think about it and you don't like how it makes you feel when you think about it and that's your argument. And you think that saying, well, if we do this, then we have to do this. For one, that's some kind of weird fucking gaslighting tactic and two. Yeah, dog, I, 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 I think you may be underestimating the amount of people who would be okay with the question, do you think we should remove statues of slave owners? I feel like a lot more people would say sure. Or at least err on the side of like, yeah, probably, then, then you're clearly able to comprehend.
Hence, they're gonna demand that the statue Sam Houston be removed out here because he owned twelve slaves.
I, and also what is this shit? The Sam Houston thing comes up all the time, it's like, motherfucker, if you wouldn't have said anything about it, almost nobody else has. And also what is this like, well, if you do that, if you give a mouse a cookie, then white genocide. You know, it's in the book. It's the most batshit fucking line of reasoning for this type of thing ever, like, like, I, I just, I cannot fucking understand it. And I also can't understand being anxious enough, because that's what kind of emotion causes this sort of reaction, it's a little bit of anxiety, whether it's fear, uh, whatever you wanna call it, it's an anxious, unpleasant feeling. Hmm, and they never take the time to examine what it is, why the fuck would I let a s- a, a monument, um, affect my emotions so much? Being someone that is not reminded of what that means from the negative side of it, well. Oh, probably, either Stormfront or some other shit, uh, I don't even know what some of the websites are, I stopped, uh, watching all of, or, or surveilling all of them because it was bad for my fucking brain health. I did pick up an article from the National Review I wanted to look at though. Uh, cuz it's like a little government thing, like it's, you know, he get, he gets a few minutes on the floor, you're only supposed to get five minutes, but I can see by the timing of this, he got like six and a half. But yeah, you get five minutes to speak uninterrupted, like you just say things, you don't ask questions, you just give, you just drop your opinion.
So let me say unequivocally that I and all of us in this room totally adored categorically reject slavery and we emphatically acknowledge that it was wrong and that no person should ever be subjugated to the ownership by another human being.
Funny then that you think it's cancel culture for someone to say, hey, I don't wanna be constantly reminded that my ancestors were owned by another human being. And, uh, here's a fucking statue that reminds me exactly who it was and the flag that they blew. Funny then that you should hold both of those opinions in the same pinhead sized marble-esque mirror reflective organ that you call a fucking brain. Are you, wah, what the fuck, dude?
We all know that. However, the labeling of Confederate symbols as evil based on the premise, this particular premise is simply short sighted. And is foolish if one looks at the facts of history and understands the reason that we honor these men.
Uh, we fucking don't, dog. Do you understand that that's what that means? When you feel like all of society is kind of being like, hey, these things that we thought were either inconsequential or pretty cool, turns out they're not. That means everybody else is looking at it objectively usually, man, uh, especially with issues like this. With issues that, um, do not give a shit what, uh, you think about it? Because it doesn't have anything to do with your lived experience in this fucking country? Other than like crying because you think people are calling you racist or if you were being racist and somebody called you on it and then you get your fucking feelings hurt, like. No, I would not have been able to be there, like I would have had to leave if I was in the room, there's no fucking way I would have made it through this shit.
It has nothing to do with defending slavery. Rather to pay homage to our ancestors that merely fought to defend their new homeland.
It's not a new homeland, you stupid fucking asshole. Now, what a crazy version of history this guy eh, lives.
So I wanna congratulate this commissioner's court on its intrepidity, its historical integrity and its defense of our history. And the good, and, and the good name of the men who this monument represents.
By the way, there isn't a single person's name on this monument. Nobody's name is on the monument, it just says our Confederate patriots. Confederate and then patriots in the same participle. Their new homeland, he says. Defending their new homeland from a tyrannical North. This is fucking white people. This is the arguments that white people have, this is a real one, I'm not even misattributing this fucking shit. This is a fucking fifty-year-old white dude who is a Colonel of something, I'm not sure, uh, and this is one of the most racist, batshit, fucking crazy things I've heard in a long time and especially to hear it coming from someone in Huntsville. It surprises me that it doesn't surprise me, if that makes any sense. I know that these people exist here, but I didn't realize they were so brazen and felt so comfortable and apparently supported, uh, as to do some shit like this out loud.
Men who were not slaveholders but were merely patriots and heroes that were defending their homeland from an invading army.
Eh, dude.
And lastly, I wanna wish all of you a very Merry Christmas. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Colonel.
Thank you very much, Colonel, fuck you dude, fuck all the dudes sitting at that little fucking crescent shaped table. Holy fuck, man. That was probably not good for me.